I'm unmuted.
Welcome, everybody. Prior to calling the meeting to order, I'm going to administer the oath to our newly-elected mayor and council members, so if you'd please rise and raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Kieran McManus.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada
And the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
Of any state notwithstanding
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will perform well and faithfully
And that I will perform well and faithfully.
All the duties of
All the duties of mayor.
City council.
City council.
Thank you. Of Boulder City, Nevada
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
On which I am about to enter
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalty of perjury.
Under the pains and penalty of perjury.
And congratulations and welcome.
Sorry, we have some business to take care of. Well, good evening, everybody. Happy to see so many people in attendance here tonight. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Deborah Downs will do the invocation for us. Please rise.
Please join with me in prayer. Almighty God, to you belong wisdom and power. Counsel and understanding are yours. You are holy, and you have called us to live lives of holiness. We pray for our newly-elected leaders as they step into the positions for which you have set them apart and to which you will hold them accountable. May they be filled with grace as they make decisions that affect the direction of our community. Grant them insight as they attempt to discern all matters in truth and fairness. Give them clarity of vision and purpose. Endow them with your wisdom and understanding to administer their duties in a manner that is right and pleasing in your sight. May the faiths they adhere to provide them with strength to resist any temptation to compromise their values and ethics. Father, your word states that all good gifts are from above. We thank you for all you have given to us, and pray that our leaders would exercise responsible stewardship over our many resources. We pray for their health physically, mentally, emotionally, and spiritually. May they submit every aspect of their lives and character to you, oh God. In our discourse this evening, may we be open to the ideas of others and respectful of our differences. Nurture the bonds of our community through your love and compassion. May your eternal wisdom be present in our midst. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Downs, for your kind words for us tonight. The normal process here would be we would proceed to our public comments, but since tonight's induction night for us, I did want to make a couple of comments. One, I want to recognize the service of the previous council members, Mayor Rod Woodbury, Councilwoman Peggy Levitt, and Councilman Rich Schuman. Again, they put their time into the efforts of supporting our city, and so I recognize the work that they did. I also wanted to say it's a privilege for anyone to serve on this council, and we have new members here tonight. I know that none of us won unanimously; that means there were folks that voted for others, but I think the group of people that we have are going to represent our city very well. They have the best interests of our city at heart; I'm certain of that. And again, it's an honor for me; this is my hometown. I certainly look forward to the opportunity of doing some things here in Boulder City where we can concentrate on our residents here. I would like to also mention that the folks that are going to be representing us, I've gotten to know them over the campaign, and again, I think they're going to do an excellent job here, but I also want to give them an opportunity to make any comments they would like to.
I guess I would just like to echo Kieran, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it really is a tremendous honor. I moved here just about when I was nine, maybe had just turned 10, and I guess never in my wildest dreams did I ever think that I would even want to be here, but here we are. This is a really a big honor, a really big privilege, and it means the world to me. And I look to represent each and every one of you to the best of my abilities, and if I ever fail at doing so, I encourage you to let me know. You know, that making this job easier when you guys reach out to us and talk to us. So, thank you once again.
I moved to Boulder City to retire. We decided that I was going to simplify my life. So here I sit, seven years later, excitedly and nervously hoping to represent each one of you, whether you voted for me or not. I have had the opportunity to sit with these two in front of the credit union, and I've had the opportunity to talk to more people than I can possibly remember. And it's just an honor and a privilege to get to do this. And I agree, if you want to contact me, I will have a direct bat phone and will answer it personally. I have an email account; I will answer those emails right away. I'm trying to the best of my ability. I text because I want to know what's going on, and I want to know what people are thinking. And I want to thank you for electing me onto this council.
Public comment? Public comment is now five minutes, as it has always stated on the agenda. At this public comment period, you may comment on items that are included on the agenda. With the return to the five-minute period, I would, again, encourage everyone, our discourse here should always be civil and concise, I hope. I know that some folks like to go on a little bit, so I am reserving the right to purchase an air horn at my own expense. But again, in all seriousness, folks, I think we can have an opportunity here to hear from you, but let's make sure that we address what we need to. Thank you. So with that, is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Ree? Please state your name. Four items pertaining to the agenda.
So my name's George Ree. I'm interested in energy issues, therefore I have a comment on Agenda Item Number Four, which is a long-term contract, I think, for hydroelectric power from Salt Lake City, which, as I understand it, is mainly from Glen Canyon Dam. And so I looked at the Boulder City Electricity, Electric Utility Resource Plan, which said that we were buying about 23 million kilowatt-hours a year of that contract, which is at four cents per kilowatt-hour, which is a number in there that's close to $1 million. So it's a sort of commitment over 30 years, what's going to be discussed on Item Four, of about a $30 million commitment. When Mr. Dwyer made his presentation, I said, "Well, what if they don't deliver the energy?" Because as you know, I'm concerned about climate change. Today in the RJ, it says there's a 40% chance of me being at 1050 by, less than 40%, but of that order, by 2023 from the Bureau of Reclamation. So I said, "What if they don't deliver the energy?" And Mr. Dwyer said, "Well, we still have to pay." And so I've tried to read the contract; I'm not a contract person; that's in the agenda. And I think that's worthy of discussion before we sign this, is what happens if they don't -- we have to hold up our share of the bargain; what happens if they don't hold up their share? Thank you.
Kelly Carlson, Boulder City resident. I would like to make a comment on regular agenda item number eight regarding filling the unexpired term for now-mayor McManus. My request on that would be that you do hold the special election. I feel that all of the residents should have the opportunity to make their voice and their vote heard on that selection for our next council member, because it is going to be another two-year term. Thank you.
Ms. Barnett?
Congrats. I wasn't going to get up, but after our last speaker, I thought I would. I recommend that we don't have an election. My understanding is I could be off; it's a $30,000 deal. And I think that the majority of Boulder City elected you guys, and I think that there are applicants who, if they are interested, will apply, and I have full confidence that you guys will do the right thing and pick the right person. So I just wanted to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Shane?
Judy DeShane. I wanted to talk on Item Three, where we're closing out the water line, and it says it's Phase Two. Is there a Phase Three, or does this mean we're now done with what we contracted and agreed to do for the solar companies down there? So I'd like to know at some point in time. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I just got in. I was out behind the barriers. Somebody had to leave before we could come in, so there's a lot of us out there; I want you guys to know this. I just want to say that I
Please, please.
I'm Peggy Kelly Durfee.
Thank you.
Longtime resident, 1957, I think, something like that, same time as Kieran. And first of all, I want to commend all of them and just say how very proud I am to see the citizens of Boulder City, their voices really being heard, and I think these guys are going to, all three of them, these two guys and one woman, are going to do a wonderful job. And as far as your appointment goes, I trust all of you that you're going to make a perfect selection for our community. Thank you.
Anyone else in the hall or in the chambers that wanted to speak? Public comment? All right, seeing no others, we will move to the approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes? Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
No changes.
Council, any changes or modifications?
On the consent agenda, I was looking to have, sorry, regular agenda.
Regular.
No changes.
No changes.
Okay, we'll need a motion for approval.
A motion to approve?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Warren, can you hear?
Mr. Ree coming, please?
Yes, we have a motion and a second for approval of the regular agenda as stated in the agenda packet.
And I vote aye.
All right. Unanimous vote for approval. We'll move now to the approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a request to move Item Numbers Two and Three to the regular agenda from the consent, please.
Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
Okay. Any other modifications by council?
No.
I'll move
I'm sorry, Mayor. If we could take those after the presentation, so we could do the introduction, the presentation, and then those items, if that would be okay?
Introduction of
The bill. So the Items Numbers, Item Numbers Two and Three would come before Item Number Eight.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modifications?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, then we'll move to Item Number Six on the regular agenda. An introduction of bill.
I will move to introduce Bill Number 1853 and waive the reader reading except for the title.
Bill Number 1853, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, amending Agreement Number 10-1314A by approving Amendment Number 10-1314B to extend the term and specify the payment schedule for a communication site lease between the City of Boulder City and Vertical Bridge LLC. Bill Number 1853 will be considered at the July 9, 2019, regular city council meeting.
Thank you. Moving to Item Number Seven, then. We have a recognition of Andy Shaper and David Enyard for their efforts for the Big Sky Conference, excuse me, Collegiate Conference tournaments.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, the city received a letter from the Big Sky College Director praising the Boulder Creek Golf Course and the golf director, Andy Shaper, and golf pro, Dave Enyard, for outstanding customer service and professionalism in hosting the Big Sky College Tournament for the last four years. The golf course, they said, and the service was great, and although they will not be back for the next few years as they rotate the golf courses for the college tournament, they wanted to honor golf director Andy Shaper and golf pro Dave Enyard for a job well done. And at this time, I'd like to ask Andy and Dave to come up, which they're here, and Andy would like to say a few words.
Well, thank you so much for having us. Great honor to be recognized for something that we do each and every day. We've, for the last few years now, have hosted so many events, and for the Big Sky to come for four years, it was an honor and privilege to have them. I want to thank Dave more than anything, because he really sunk his teeth into this and his attention to detail over that event, as well as all of the other events that we have at the golf course. We couldn't do it without Dave, so kudos to Dave here. He's really the one that puts the time and effort in and the reason they came back. But yeah, it was just, it's been a lot of fun to see the competition of a Division One Conference come, as well as UNLV ladies when they come in the fall. You know, it's just a great pleasure to see that competition happen and the great scores being played, and everyone has a very enjoyable time at the golf course, so thank you.
And just to echo a lot of what Andy said, the sixteen and a half years I've been working for and with Andy, it's been a great experience, a great honor, and, you know, couldn't do it without him and the support of the city. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. And we have a couple of recognitions here; we'll go ahead and do a presentation. And I would just like to point out that Mr. Shaper is now managing both courses, the municipal course and Boulder Creek. I've heard good things from a few people that I know that still play golf. My golf days are over, folks. Okay, we will move on, then, to Item Number Two, then, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Keegan Luttrell; I'm the Public Works Director. Item Number Two is a three-part item that is pertaining to the Boulder City Parkway Complete Street Project. The first part, Part A, Resolution 6950, is a resolution, it's an interlocal contract with RTC for additional funding for the project. The original interlocal with RTC was back in 2016, when we were just basically starting on design and just had a real rough estimate of what the project was cost. After working with our construction manager at risk, we came up with a guaranteed max price, and the price was more than originally anticipated. So we went back to RTC and asked them for the additional funding, which is about $4.4 million, and they gladly obliged and are going to fund the rest of that portion of the project. Part B, Resolution 6951, is the resolution with our construction manager at risk, American Civil Constructors. They have a guaranteed max price of $15.8 million to complete this project. And then Resolution 6952 is a resolution to transfer CIP, utility CIP funds, to designate them towards this project. RTC is paying for a large portion of this project. There is about $700,000 in the project that we need to do for utilities. We're going to replace some of the sewer mains, all the water services, move some fire hydrants, stuff like that, and that's what the $700,000 is going to pay for. Here to answer any questions, the contractor, Jed Wheeler, with ACC is here, and also, our city engineer was here, but he had to take off.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I had requested this item be placed under the regular agenda because we are talking about such a large number of the utility funds being spent, and I know in campaigning, that was a huge interest for a lot of people, is where is our money going? So I wanted to have this discussion so people could start to get an understanding of how we're spending that. I know I asked some of these questions and you were able to answer them, but I just wanted to ask them again. These utility replacements were always assumed to be needed for this project?
Correct. Yeah, the utilities, to best my knowledge, most of them were installed back in 1969 or somewhere around there, so since we already have the road open during this project, it's the best time to get in there and replace all these utilities.
Right. And then, which was my other question, how old is the infrastructure? Obviously, it's getting up there. And then about the funding, where that's coming? The majority of this funding is coming from completed projects with remaining budget left over from, that was completed already that has still remaining budget?
Yeah, and you see in the packet, there's four, six, seven projects. Most of those projects were other CIP projects that we either completed in-house, or they're a lot smaller in scale than what we anticipated when we created the CIP. So yeah, it is the leftover funding from those projects that we're moving forward. There is one that the project wasn't complete. We're able to push that off without too much of a scare, just we're not sure on exactly what we're going to do for that project. Part of that is we're going to be doing an assessment on all of our utilities, and that'll be identified in there.
No further questions for me.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
My question to you yesterday was similar to what Councilman Adams had, was we talk a lot about our aging infrastructure here in Boulder City, and even though 1969 sounds like a long time ago, 1939 is even longer ago than that, and I'm sure there are some of that infrastructure still in place here. But obviously, we have an offer from RTC to pay for this project. As you said, the roadway will be opened up, and for us not to go ahead at this time with this, probably it would be short-sighted of us. So we know we have a lot of work to do on our infrastructure here in Boulder City, but some projects are going to have to get moved up depending on what else happens, so.
One thing I did fail to mention is that Endot volunteered to give us $640,000 to do additional asphalt repairs. We weren't going to do quite the extensive repairs in a few areas, but you'll notice in front of Chili Jilly's how broke up it is. That's what the $640,000 is going towards asphalt like that.
And that project will be beginning when?
Pending our Endot permit, we're hoping to start the second week, third week, in July.
And the estimated length of time?
We have 10 months in the contract. Right now, we're discussing with the contractor some different ways to maybe shorten that up, but we're trying to impact the public the least possible. So right now, it's looking at 10 different phases, and so it would be taking 10 months, a month per phase.
And one of the conditions of this, as I recall, is this construction manager at risk has, I believe the word is assured, that access to all the businesses will be available?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and consider these separately, then. Resolution 6950 is the resolution for the supplemental interlocal contract. I'll move to approve that.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes. Item B is Resolution 6951, a resolution between Boulder City approving the contract with American Civil Constructors as construction managers at risk. Again, I'll move to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Item C, Resolution 6952, a resolution of the City Council of Boulder City, amending and revising the fiscal year capital improvement plan by relocating funds from water and wastewater utility capital improvement projects to this parkway project. Again, I'll move for passage of that.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Again, unanimous. All right, we'll move to item number three then, Resolution 6953, and Mr. Luttrell again.
Again, Keegan Luttrell, Public Works Director. Item number three, Resolution 6953, is the resolution for approval of the final acceptance, final payment, release of bonds, and release of retention for the El Dorado Phase Two project, El Dorado Waterline Phase Two project. This portion of the project was the boring underneath the highway, the parkway, and also under the railroad tracks. Staff reviewed, did a final walkthrough on the project on May 6th and found the project to be complete. And I also would like to mention that it came in almost $100,000 under budget. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from council?
Okay, yeah, again, I asked that this agenda item be moved because this water solar line was a big discussion when we were campaigning. So this is the completion of the second phase? It's my understanding that there is a third phase to be completed, potentially?
Yes, staff, it's kind of, that's kind of a tricky question, and I know during public comment, they asked about that too. We're reviewing the contracts from the early 2000s right now. It was originally anticipated that there was a Phase Three, that we'd have to get down to basically the training facility area. So like I said, we're reviewing those contracts right now to make certain that that's our obligation to get it all the way down there, so I don't really have a clear answer for you, sorry.
If we were to go forward, do we have any idea what that might cost us, that third phase?
Ballpark, three or four million dollars.
And up to date, how much have we spent on the first two phases?
Two phases, 2.5, maybe 2.6.
So in the end, we're talking over, about over five million?
Yeah, five, six million.
Plus, okay.
Okay, I have a question. From what I understand, originally, we were paid 2 million, and was that for Phase One or Phase One and Two?
Phase One was to install, it wasn't clarified as Phase One, Phase Two. Public Works split that up into two phases because it's essentially two different types of construction. One is open trench where they can use an excavator, that's the Phase One that's running along the highway and down south. Phase Two is where they had to bore underneath the highway, so it's kind of different construction, so that's why we split it up into two phases. So taking a step back, it wasn't split into phases, yes, we were given $2 million to construct this solar line, and that's why we're reviewing that contract to clarify where our termination point is.
That was the other question, was, we don't know whether or any part of a Phase Three would be contained within the original contract.
Yeah, that's, that was the tricky part that we're reviewing right now, and like I said, it was originally anticipated that we had to take it down to the training facility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had also spoken about moving this to the regular agenda because of the interest the public has in this project. There certainly been a lot of things said about why this particular project moved forward. I know it was already in the process when you began working as our public utility, or excuse me, Public Works Director. Much of the planning was already in place when I came on to council for it. This had been something that started, as you said, back in the early 2000s. I know from talking with the solar companies more recently, at least one that is planning to begin construction on a project down there, they felt they have sufficient amount of water in making arrangements with the company that has the rights to the existing line. I'm glad you're taking the time to look into this more fully because the inference of this has been that the intent was to get the line where it is now for purposes other than what the solar company had originally requested. So, I hope we can take a hard look at this and decide if we were given $2 million originally, and this is now turned into a five or six million dollar project, plus whatever that company would have to pay to meet that line. I believe they've got several miles to come up to meet that, is that correct?
Yeah, it's looking like about 12 miles they would have to go, and using the dollars that we had to install Phase One and Phase Two, it would be multi-million dollars for them to get it that far.
All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a couple, one more. So, potentially, this company could decide, this might be too costly for us to move forward, for us, so we don't want to, we don't need you guys to meet that end through this third phase out to that training facility. So essentially, are you, they would, what, release us of our obligation in the contract to that? Or, and then, my second follow-up question to that would be, did we approach them in the very beginning, before we started putting all of this effort into this project, and ask them, do you guys have interest in us continuing this, or do you just want the $2 million back and we can call it a wash? Was that ever considered?
Don't have a clear answer on either one of them. The first one, I'm assuming, but I might have to lean on Steve a little bit, but yeah, I'm guessing they could back out of their end of the contract, but I don't know for sure. A lot of that language goes over my head.
That would be some of the information that we'd be looking into. We do have the feelers out, if you will, to determine with the solar companies what their plans and intentions are. We have not heard back from them. The information in these discussions have been with our contract manager Brock Armstrout. My understanding is that they have that with their engineering right now, to make those determinations. So, we're waiting to hear back from them, but obviously, we don't want to spend more money if we don't have to.
And I guess that would just get back to my question, was, were those feelers put out before we ever even started this process? Did they say, go this far and then we'll make that determination, or?
Councilmember, if I may answer that question, the staff that was, that would have done that is not here today, so we can't really answer for them, but I can tell you that the staff that is here, as we were completing Phase One and Phase Two, have reached out to the solar companies to ask them their intent for the remaining portion of this project. And to date, we haven't received answers. I'm assuming it's because maybe they're reassessing their needs, so perhaps maybe they may find they don't need it, and so that contract will probably be now, you know, done.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I just have a comment and a question, I guess. At the present time, the water line terminates at I-11, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
He answered affirmatively.
I got it.
Any other questions, Councilman Harha?
No, I got the information up.
All right. With that then, I will move for approval of Resolution 6953.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Move on to item number eight, discussion and possible staff directive regarding the selection process for a council member to fill the unexpired term of myself. Madam City Clerk, perhaps you could give us an overview of the options and outcome, possible outcomes?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as you know, with your successful election as mayor, it does leave a vacancy on your former council seat. That seat does expire in June 2021. The council has two options to consider to fill the seat. You can either appoint a person to fill the seat, and if you choose that method, that has to be done within 30 days of the vacancy, or within three regular or special meetings, whichever is shorter, so the shorter would be the 30 days, because we don't have a second meeting in July. That being said, we could call a special meeting if we had to. And the other option is to call for a special election. And because it's only one race, the state law allows us to conduct a special election by mail ballot, only mail, M-A-I-L. Mail ballot only, if it chooses, or we can also run another special election, just as you would a primary or a general, but the timeframe would be very condensed. It wouldn't run a full cycle. It would take approximately, whether it was mail or the normal standard way, it would take approximately 45 days from the call of the election to the canvas. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
And by canvas, you mean the, actually, some period of time after the election?
Exactly. Usually, we can wrap it up in 40 days, and then depending how it falls, you know, we can canvas it within usually about five days. Joe's very good at getting the official finals back to us. Last time it was three days, so I would anticipate, you know, coming in closer than a week.
All right.
And just keep in mind, if the council chooses to do the appointment process, the person appointed must be a qualified elector, and they also have to meet the residency requirements that are required per our charter, which is, you have to have been a Boulder City resident for two years.
All right, I'll go ahead and open it for questions from council or comments.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes, one of the, in analyzing the present situation, every member of council right now has been endorsed and promoted for office by the BCCA. And I, for one, feel uncomfortable doing the promotion, the selection process, because I would rather be a small d Democrat and let the course run out with a special election, even though it's going to cost us money. But it could cost us a lot more money downstream if the wrong selection is made by us. I would rather have the people decide, and the people who have come up out of the grassroots now, and I know I've got a half a dozen people that have emailed me and say, pick me, pick me, and pick me, and honestly, I don't know them from a hill of hay. So, I would prefer to have the special election, and which time the people that want to have that fifth seat campaign, state their positions on the issues, and undergo the fire of a campaign. Each one of us has had that experience, and I would invite any new person to join us in that same experience. It, I believe it takes away the taint of inside dealing, if you will, or special dealing, or carrying back a favor, and also provides us an opportunity to see some additional folks who have decided, now that they see how things have unfolded, that they want to have their word, and they want to spread their word. And also, the picking of an individual, we could wind up with somebody who has absolutely no skin in the game, and that's what I would look for, that's what I would want. I'd want to see that level of commitment, and therefore, I'm going to speak for the selection process being left to the citizens, and we go with the special election. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would just follow up on that with the opposite point of view. The state legislature has given all of the municipal bodies in Nevada two choices to make. One choice is for the existing council members to choose someone to complete a term, the other is to hold a special election. I did go back and look at what's happened here in Nevada in the past year. There were a number of vacancies at the state legislature this year, a couple on city councils in Nevada. With all but one exception, those seats were filled by people being chosen by whatever body was designated to make that choice. The only special election that was held was for a seat on the Las Vegas City Council, and that opening had occurred within a very short period of time before the general election that was held just recently. So they, they already had an election planned and in progress before the vacancy occurred, and when the vacancy occurred, their decision was, we'll just go ahead and place that seat also on the ballot. I believe there were two other city council seats for Las Vegas on that same ballot. We get elected to represent both the people who voted for us and the people who did not vote for us. As far as who endorsed who, I don't believe that has any significance at all. I received an endorsement from the State Hands Union. If someone from the State Hands Union were to tell me that I had to make a particular choice, I would say, thank you, you can have your endorsement back. I don't think endorsements have anything to do with this process that we're talking about now. I believe that the four members of this council can certainly do their homework, that's their obligation to the public, to see who would be best to serve on this council. And again, we just finished an election where 60% of this council was chosen by the voters, and I believe we can come to some agreement on that. So again, I'll look to the other two members. Do they have any comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of comments. Obviously, a special election would be the most democratic process that we have available to us. However, there are some concerns that I do have regarding it that I kind of wanted to go over. One is the money. I know $30,000 might seem like a drop in the bucket compared to some of the larger figures that we talk about up here, but it is real money, you know? $30,000 is more money than I'm going to make in a year in this position. As an elected representative, I feel it's my role to take input from the community, bring that here into discussion as we deliberate the direction for the city. And by far, by a huge, huge amount, the people who have reached out to me have said, they don't want to go through another election cycle. There's no denying that the last one got really contentious towards the end, and a lot of people are frankly fatigued by it. You know, I can't stress, there were, I can think of only two people who personally reached out to me suggesting that maybe the, a special election would be the appropriate way, and of course, there was public comment, but, but by far, there's just been an exorbitant amount of people who would like to see an appointment. I think it would be negligent of me to just say, hey, you know what, this, this just is going to be easier, no sweat off my back, I mean, hey, I don't have to run in an election again, so let's just do this. But I think it would be remiss in my duties to put it off in that way, charge us the money when so many people have reached out and say, you know, we're really kind of fatigued by how this whole thing went down. Which kind of brings us back to the whole point of having that democratic process of an election, is, a big major key to that is having participation. And if people are saying, and the community is kind of saying, we're not really interested in participating, well then you kind of risk running, you know, how representative will it be? How meaningful will that representation be? Of course, I'm not opposed to the idea, I'm certainly interested in what the other council members have to say, and if there's any other comments from the public, I certainly am interested in, in hearing that as well. But those are my thoughts at this time. Thank you.
I've had a lot of thoughts about this. I've received a lot of input on this. I'm concerned in the role of social media on this. I have swung back and forth between the only fair way to do this is an election, to, we were elected to represent the population, the voters of Boulder City, and therefore, given the trust to make this given the trust to make this decision." I've looked up, not just Nevada, but a lot of other cities that have gone through this, and I couldn't find, besides Las Vegas, any that had had an election. These were always appointed. There wasn't, what I found was there was an appointment process, that they had an application of sorts to fill out, that it wasn't, I mean, I've received something as quick as, "Please think of me," to a text message that would go on forever. Really, I had somebody give me their entire resume in a text message. I know that there are some good people who are interested in doing this. Like I said, this has been a very difficult decision. I didn't think we were gonna start out with difficult decisions, you know? I was hoping for something easy and just sort of work my way through. I think ideally, if it didn't cost a lot of money and put people through this whole thing all over again, I would go with an election. However, I'd like to know, I'd like to see if there was a way to have an appointment, but have some sort of structured process through it. I'm just concerned about, Warren said, the taint of it, on the relationship or the effect of having an endorsement. I've always felt I had an endorsement by a group of people, but that's what it was, an endorsement. I put on my signs, putting Boulder City first, that was my responsibility, was to Boulder City, and not to any group or individual in particular. If there was a way to do it through appointment where there was some structure, I would feel very comfortable with that.
Well, I'll just add, I'll just add that the state and our charter have spelled out the process, and that process isn't about scoring systems, or public meetings, or any of that. The state law gives us two options. Our charter then spells out a couple of other requirements, but none of that has anything to do with people applying, or the, being scored, or any of that. Is that correct? They simply must be a qualified elector here in the city.
That is correct. The only paperwork that I'm aware of is if somebody agrees to be nominated.
I believe he stole some candy.
He sure did.
He sure did.
If somebody is nominated, they have to sign a acceptance of candidacy. So, they would have to complete a form that's similar to what you filed to be considered as a candidate, but theirs would be an acceptance, because they were being nominated.
Councilman Hari, did you have some comments?
Yes, I did. And the thing is that I too have done the research on these various elections and appointment situations. And the result is that I could not find a similar situation to the one that exists in Boulder City. Again, the fact is that we all have been endorsed by this group. We all would probably have the, could have the perception of having a feeling of, "We owe back, we have to give back to this group." And I'm gonna speak very frankly. This group was intended in the beginning to overcome the backroom dealing of the good old boys, and to bring the process of electing the leadership and governance to Boulder City under the bright light of democracy. The unfortunate position that I saw is, over the time period of time, that has devolved into rather undemocratic processes, where my election endorsements have been made prior to even the announcement of the candidates. The very undemocratic process. So, it's actually, it's become what it was originally organized to be, a tool to bring transparency and openness to Boulder City's governance. And we must remember that our goal is not to save money, and yes, the thirty thousand dollars could, you know, is a sizable sum, but our goal is to provide Boulder City the best governance that it can have. And I do think that's required a complete hand away, or a complete amount of independence, again, from this group that has endorsed us in the past, and would, I believe, may, in fact, the founders of that group have already expressed their position that they wish to fill that fifth seat. And I do, whatever we decide, I have to express my uncomfortable nature with the appointment process. And that is why I support the election, because it, again, is the small d democratic process wound down to the end. And I know that there is election fatigue, and I know all of these negatives, but I'm not looking at that, I'm looking at a clean situation for the best governance in Boulder City. That would be my objective, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would just like to say, because I've certainly been notified that there's social media out there, and again, my goal in life is to never, ever again have to look at Facebook, but that's probably not gonna happen. I think it's a contrivance, myself, to say that some group that has endorsed candidates in the past, maybe their members have actually campaigned for people, is somehow prohibited from making any comments further. I don't believe that that is the goal of any group here in Boulder City. I think, too, if you go and look at the open positions and the people who were nominated for those, you will often find that it's the activists in their community that are being nominated for these positions. I don't believe that's a surprise to anyone. I think those are the people who have already shown that they're going to step up in ways to try and serve their community. To try and blemish any organization or any candidate here by saying that there's something wrong with that, there's a couple of possibilities, that this group's either really lucky, and they happen to endorse the right people, or they're really smart and they did endorse the right people. So, there's a couple of different ways to look at this, but unless there's any other comments from the council, I know this is not a public hearing, but I would like to open this up to public comment. All right? Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Again, please give your name. Mr. Hutchinson?
Good evening. My name's Ainsworth Hunt. I'm a Boulder City resident. I believe that we elected the members of city council to be representative government. And while I may have some concerns about the appearance of quid pro quo with regards to people who are members of an active group that have helped people get informed about what's going on with the elections in Boulder City, and have endorsed candidates for office in Boulder City, I believe that the elected representatives of our government should be entrusted to do their jobs in terms of making decisions on our behalf. What's the point of having people as elected representatives unless they're going to make those decisions? As to the tough business of making hard decisions in government, that's what our elected representatives are there for. And so, I believe that having a special election right now is counterproductive. I'm going to bow out in terms of saying I would have no interest in the job. But I recognize that it is something that people are interested in, and any candidate that wants to come forward should come forward, should speak up, should speak their mind as to why they should be a person that city council should take an interest in, and not denigrate anybody else who is doing or applying for that same position. I believe that the best way for this to take place is in a positive manner. I believe that people aren't good or bad in general, they're appropriate for certain roles in life. They either have the education, the experience, the interest, the dedication to do what they need to do. And I believe that people should speak up on their own behalves to the members of city council, and present themselves as to why they'd be a person who would serve this city well. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm Justin Keough. I'm a local resident. I think James has read the situation exactly right. We've been through a lot of work here to put you where you are, and we trust that you'll do the right thing, and we don't want to go through that anymore. So, I'm here for endorsing what James put forward.
Good evening. My name is Igor Sushko, and I'm a resident here. If Mr. McManus's council seat is to be filled through an appointment, I feel it should be done based on merit to the best possible extent. In my view, a person should possess some basic knowledge of how laws and government work, a very high level of critical thinking, ability to properly analyze large amounts of complex data and information. This includes statistical analysis, budgeting, and figuring out how much things should actually cost. Excellent negotiating skills. I know that it's not always possible, but the rule of thumb in the professional business world is to get at least ten quotes for any expenditure that is not insignificant. One or two vendors will typically be much better than the rest in both price and quality. Resourcefulness, knowing what information this group will have for the decision at hand, and how to efficiently and quickly acquire that information. An instinct developed through experience to quickly sense when a given set of facts just don't add up. Ability to maintain a goal-oriented, rational head, and to quickly admit any mistake or error. A person cannot properly learn from their mistakes if they refuse to admit them. This is the basis of taking responsibility for one's actions and words. No one is perfect, we all make mistakes. I've learned that the most competent people do not fear making them, but they do make them rather rarely. And when they do, they take full responsibility for them, and ensure they don't make a similar type of mistake in the future. And I also believe that we elected the current council to make that kind of an appointment decision, rather than having us go through another election.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Bobby Olinger Johnson, and I'm a local resident and local attorney. I wanted to point out to you that there is a potential third alternative here, which is that you just had an election. And so, you may want to take a look at the other runners-up, and potentially offer it to one of them. I personally voted for all of you, and I'm so glad that you're here. But I also think that that could go a long way towards healing relationships in this community.
My name is Linda Barnett. I take offense at things that were said tonight about the BCCA. I feel like the definition for tainted is, when I don't agree with you, it becomes tainted. I don't think that BCCA is tainting anyone, or is tainted. What they stand for, and I'm not a spokesman for them, but I've been to meetings where most of us have, is historic preservation, controlled growth, physical responsibility, and sticking to the Boulder City codes. That's what they, we have them for. So, I take great offense at someone who would imply that this is a tainted organization. To me, that's, excuse the language, BS.
Sorry, I have to adjust it, you know that. Okay. I worked myself to death for this election. I don't want to go through another one. I concur with Linda. I'm very upset with the facts that have been put forward. Some people seem to take an endorsement, and then now they don't think it's right to take an endorsement. We voted to elect you. You have the intelligence, the integrity, and we need to rely on you. We don't want to come here every meeting and say, "Oh, we want you to do this, we want you to do that." That's why we elected you. You have to make the decisions, and I believe that any decision that the three or the four of you make will be the right decision. Thank you so very much.
Hi, Laura Pizer, co-founder of the Boulder City Community Alliance. Just a couple of facts. Thank you so much, Judy and Linda, for your support for BCCA. BCCA is a Facebook page, fourteen hundred members. Not every single member lives in Boulder City or is a registered voter. We also have an email list of a hundred and thirty people. To put so much pressure and importance and significance into the BCCA and in governing our city council, I feel is incredibly unfair to the entirety of Boulder City and the entirety of Boulder City voters. Voters voted for you guys, not just BCCA. So, I do support an appointment and anything that you guys have to do up there, because you guys are gonna do a great job.
Svetalina Stefanova. I have a question about this thirty thousand dollar cost of the election. Is that, does that include our current staff, the work that they would have to put into that? Does that, is that simply the cost of the ballot machines? There's, I think there's more, potentially more factors to that than just that thirty thousand dollars, if you consider the time and effort that our city staff will be putting forth to that, as well as the fact that we would have a much longer period of time where our council is not complete, and we only have four members voting items that are coming up on the agendas, and having a quorum to vote on those items. So, there's kind of a lot of factors that go into whether a, having a special election that I think may not be considered. I probably have other things to say, but thank you.
Hi there. My name's Pam Murphy. I'm a resident of Boulder City. I'm glad I don't have to make this decision. But I wanted to just say a word in support of what Claudia mentioned. I'm a great believer in process and structure, and right now, it feels a little, there's one way to go that's very structured, we know what an election is, and there's another way to go, we're gonna make an appointment, and how are you going to proceed on that? So, I know that there is no regulation set- So I know that there is no regulation set in place about how you would proceed on that. But I think for the, in the interests of clarity and transparency, it would be nice for the electorate to know, how are we thinking of going about this? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council. I will go ahead and make a motion to use the method of appointment for the open seat on council.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Please.
To the point of costs involved, that $30,000, is that just for doing the mail-in ballot, and that covers all of the costs entirety? Are we talking, is that a rough number? What's the, what is that number?
Yes, at the time I wrote the staff report, that was a very rough number, and since then, I've done some more research. So just to answer Svetalina's question with respect to my time or our staff's time, that's never a factor in costs, because that is part of our job and one of the primary functions of the city clerk's office. So any costs that we discuss when we talk about elections does not factor in our salaries. So, for example, I can give you an exact cost for mail ballot only because it's per unit, and it, you know, with postage, we can figure that out pretty easily. Mail ballots, just the ballots, the postage, is $22,544. That does not include what we would have to pay to the county for their staff, and that does not include any legal notices that I would be required to publish. So $30,000 to $40,000 is a very good estimate for a mail ballot-only election. If we conducted the election as we did in a primary in general, it's going to be higher, much higher. We received a bill from the county for the primary, I know I forwarded it to Mayor McManus, but just the cost for the county's portion alone was $40,000. Again, that does not include any legal notices, it did not include several things that we pay directly for. I hope that answers. And then as far as the process goes, just to provide a little bit of history, I'm sorry, in the past, we've done this in our history, and the process is, people who are qualified would reach out to their respected elected officials and express interest. That doesn't mean we have to do it in the same manner. You, as a council, can decide, I would like people to meet with me. You can submit an email, you can send me a resume, I'd like to know your experience. It can be up to you, however, in the past, the process is, they've expressed interest, the board meets, they say, I received, you know, feedback from John Q. Public, I'd like to nominate them, and you vote. That, as Mayor McManus mentioned, that is the process.
Any other discussion by council? Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
I'll just make one more comment. Should we go with this appointment process? I think it's beholden to all of us to make sure that we, you know, we understand that perception is reality oftentimes. And so it would be up to us to ensure that people don't feel that we've pulled the wool over their eyes or done anything like that. It's important that people feel confident in the process and making sure that it's done. And so I think that, should we go this way, that it is up to us to make sure that people have that confidence. Obviously, failing to do so could have big repercussions, and so it is something that I will take into great consideration, is the perception of everything, just because, just because somebody perceives it to be doesn't necessarily mean that it is. But, again, the saying goes, perception is reality. So it is something that will certainly, I think, I will be factoring in, and I hope everybody else will be factoring in, should we go this way.
I wanted to make a comment. I did not at all feel tainted by an endorsement from the ECCA. What I was sharing was feedback that I have received in text messages and email from individuals who are concerned about the outcome, because they feel that inasmuch as we were all endorsed, that the process could be tainted. I use that word because that word was used in several expressions to me in writing. I do not feel that that was the case. And I agree with Councilman Adams, that part of it is going to be communicating with the public as they give in from, you know, ask for information, that this will be a well-thought-out process.
Councilman Haray, any comments? Councilman Haray?
Have I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I just want to express the fact that I wanted to mention that I've made hard decisions, and this decision is certainly not the hardest I've made in my life. And, but I do, did want to, not just to be a contrarian, and I know that the special election process would be a heavy lift and hard to convince, but my eventual "nay" vote recognizes the fact that I feel uncomfortable with the process as it proceeds. And I think the comments of Councilman Adams and Bridges both are relevant in terms of the fact that we must ensure the highest level of openness and transparency in this process. So the perception of dealing instead of the good old boys is now the good new people. So that's my point. That was my preference, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to record it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion then to proceed with this by selection by council, and that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nays.
Motion passes three to one then. Moving on then to item number nine for possible action, appointment to the allotment committee. Madam City Clerk, would you mind explaining the process for this committee?
Yes, the allotment committee meets on an as-needed basis. It is, they don't meet very often. The allotment committee is comprised of seven at-large members serving two-year terms, and the allotment committee rates and reviews applications for allotments and presents its recommendation to the planning commission. This is the only committee or board that chooses its members by lot, so names of interested people. People interested in serving on the committee are put into a jar, and you draw the names. We did receive one additional volunteer application that's in front of you tonight. We have four vacancies, so I'm asking the council to draw four names for terms that will expire June 30th, 2021, please.
Thank you. I'm going to buy something new for this, this just... Councilwoman, would you please draw one? Councilman Adams? Councilman Haray, would you like me to draw yours for you?
Yeah, draw it over here, I'll pick.
Okay, we have one left. Councilwoman Bridges, would you read the name you've drawn?
Thomas Tyler.
Councilman Adams?
Rebecca Ballister.
The name selected in Mr. Haray's place is Teresa Beaver, and the name I selected was Sheri Jorgensen. Any further action required?
Congratulations to my pick.
So again, I'll just read these very quickly for everybody. Rebecca Ballister, Thomas Tyler, Sheri Jorgensen, and Teresa Beaver were the four names selected. Moving to item 10 for possible action, city council appointments. Before we get too far into this, I think I'm going to make a motion, we can certainly discuss after that. The situation we currently have is, we only have three members here tonight, we have a vacancy, and Mr. Haray continues to convalesce. These committees are very important. I was at a meeting this afternoon for the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, but I don't think we're in a place where we can do these assignments right now. I know that these committees can function, being a member down for a short period of time. I believe we'll have a replacement councilperson by our next council meeting. So I'm going to make a motion to abate this, or hold this in abeyance till our next meeting on July 9th, I believe the meeting is. Anyone care to second that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I guess just, so while we're here, since, you know, we can't otherwise have this conversation, I just figured it'd be good to, I would just kind of list through some of the boards that I was considering, that I would be the best, best represent on, that I could not only have interest on, but serve Boulder City best. So just thought I would go over that, so we can kind of think about it a little bit, and obviously, we don't have to make any decisions tonight. The first one at the top of the list is probably at the top of others, it's a big important one, LVCVA, that's the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. It's the official organization of Southern Nevada promoting tourism, conventions, meetings, and special events. This is not just, these are not just fields that I am interested in, these are the very fields that I work in in my day-to-day life. I have helped organize events that have collectively brought in thousands of people from around the country, even from around the world here in the Southern Nevada. I've helped organize a lot of events here, right here in Boulder City, that have drawn people in from the surrounding states. Again, it is something that's where my predominant experience lies. Not only that, I feel that my 24 years here in Boulder City, paired with my youthfulness, provides me a unique advantage in being a strong advocate for the city and potentially drawing in funds to help maybe promote tourism, obviously, and to maybe mitigate some of the effects of the I-11 on our corridor. The next that I had on my list was the Nevada League of Cities, either of those positions I'd be interested in. I love Nevada, I love traveling through Nevada, I love going to all the little stops and towns, meeting people, kind of learning their history, seeing how they function, I just think it would be a great fit. Third on my list is the Southern Nevada Water Authority. I don't necessarily have the technical expertise, but it is an area of great interest and concern for me. Growing up, we actually moved here to Boulder City. My family, we started a wholesale tree nursery, just on the other side of the dam, that predominantly focused in native and adapted desert plant material. Obviously, that goes hand-in-hand with water conservation. There was always a copy of the Cadillac Desert on the coffee table. I can't say I got through it for a book about the water wars, I found it quite dry. But it is, it is one that I'd be interested in. Next, Boulder City Community Education Advisory Board. I don't have any children, obviously, in the school system right now, but I think it's not too far of a stretch to say I'm probably the one who has most recently gone through it. But my, my great-grandmother was a teacher, my grandfather got his PhD in education, my grandmother was a teacher, my mom's a teacher, my sister's a teacher, her husband's a teacher. I have a number of friends who are teachers, it is very important to me. So that is another area where I think I could excel at. And also, the Southern Nevada Health District Board. Once again, not a lot of personal technical experience, but I do have interests in it. My only real reservation with it, and why it's at the bottom of my list, is that they meet at 8:00 AM, and that doesn't always sit well with me. But those are my picks, that's where I'm thinking where I would be best. Obviously, I'm not opposed to potentially sitting on others, but I thought I would put that out there so that people could kind of see how that pairs with where they would best be.
Well, that makes our selection process very easy, you get everything.
I don't want them all, I just figured I'd go wide.
I too would like to just put a few out there for consideration. The Southern Nevada Water Authority was the first one, because my background is, I taught marketing and sustainability, and I'm very concerned about water, and very interested in keeping up on what the future holds for us. Also, the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, Clark County Debt Management Commission, because I also have a background in finance, an MBA. Pool Pact, I was interested, along with the Regional Flood Control District, which goes with the RTC. And I wanted to be considered as mayor pro tem because of my, the outcome of the election, along with my background in councils and committees at the academic level. And, but, but not the one that meets at 7:00 on Tuesdays in the morning.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just make a comment, that I would certainly like, because I would be the senior member on council besides yourself, to at least be looked at for mayor pro tem, but at the same time, I would recognize that my present condition unfortunately would not allow me to do justice to that esteemed position. But I certainly feel that if the conditions were different, I would feel very honored to be the mayor pro tem of the city of Boulder City. But I really need to pass on that at this time.
Are there any other preferences you have, Councilman Haray?
Oh, sure. I have really enjoyed my assignments for the last two years. And at first, I thought, what the heck is Workforce Connections? And the more I got involved in it, I took over the seat that was occupied by Peggy Levitt. And she mentored me, and it provided me an opportunity to meet other local elected officials in Southern Nevada, and also in some of the two counties, countries, and get to learn about their problems, get to learn about networking with them, and get to work, get to know how the federal government is involved in workforce training and job placement. And a long time ago, in the last century, I was a vocational teacher. So I have some expertise in that area, which I was able to offer. As it turned out, I was able to continue to offer my input, which was taken. I was invited to go to Washington at the expense of the Workforce Connection, where I was able, again, to participate, and I really enjoyed that assignment. As to other assignments, I did not mind being on the Advisory Health Board. In fact, I found it very helpful to the citizens of Boulder City. The Advisory Health Board meets, and basically is a lower-level board, however, I got all of the press releases and news that would affect the health of Southern Nevadans, such as the Nile Fever and the breakout of measles and other things, and was able to post them on social media here and spread the word on things that affect our citizens. And I have no problem in reassuming that role. And I have no problem in reassuming that role. The other thing that I was able to do is to serve on the audit committee, which I enjoyed. I did enjoy looking over the budget because the budget, again, determines what are the objectives of the city going forward. And again, I would like to be reappointed or to serve on the, on the business committee. As to other, the other committees, I honestly, the Las Vegas Visitors and Convention, Convention and Visit Authority has always been considered the plum job, the job that had gone to either the person with the highest seniority or the person who knew the mayor better. And I, I don't feel that I could participate fully to, again, represent the city on that board. So basically, I have a very short list, and I feel comfortable that I could participate and add whatever skills that I have to those, those boards. And if there's one left over, I certainly would not mind being on that one. However, those are the three preferences that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I do need to make one amendment to my motion, apparently, that we do select a mayor pro tem. Madam City Clerk is concerned that I may get hit by a bus, and we would need a replacement for me. So we will, what I would like to suggest then is we go forward with the motion to abate this question to our next meeting, with the exception of the mayor pro tem, and then we can address the mayor pro tem. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Haray, are you able to hear?
Aye, I voted aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. With regard to the mayor pro tem, again, that is a position that, in my absence, would serve the duties of this. With that in mind, I would like to nominate James Adams for it, Councilman Adams. I know that he has been coming to a lot of these meetings for many months now, a few years. I think he's probably more aware of the procedures that we follow. I understand Councilwoman Bridges' desire to do it, as well as Councilman Haray, but the reason I'm nominating Councilman Adams is I think it takes some background to understand what this position is about. And I think this is an annual appointment, is it not, Madam City Clerk? Okay, so that will be my nomination, is for Councilman Adams. Any other nominations?
I would like to stand, as I said, for that position of mayor pro tem. And I too have been attending meetings for the last year and a half and believe that I would be capable of taking on those duties.
Okay, should we, Mr. Haray, do you have any nominations?
No, I've been attending all the meetings, telephonically or otherwise. I've been there. You can count on me.
All right.
But like I said, I, at the present state of my convalescence, I don't believe I could do 100%, and I don't like to take on something that I can't get at 100% level. So I would also support an additional younger council member than myself at this point. We'll see what happens next year.
Thank you. So, Madam City Clerk, how should we do this? Vote on each of the nominations separately?
Correct.
Okay, first be for...
Can I actually, just quick discussion, do I vote? Do you vote on yourself if your name is called? Is that...
That's proper.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, you always want to vote for yourself because if you lose by one, you're really going to kick yourself later. Okay, first name then, Councilman Adams. I vote aye. Any other ayes for Councilman Adams?
Aye.
I vote aye.
I guess, do we need to move to the last name, or? We have three ayes. All right?
I think we're cool.
All right, moving to item number 11 then, city manager's report.
I'm a member on council. There's no, all, all the transactions are routine. There's nothing to report under this item.
Thank you. Any questions from council on city manager's report?
No.
All right, that then brings us to our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? I see a hand in the back there. Mrs. DeShane.
I know that this is just open and that Mayor McManus does not want to look at Facebook, and that's fine, but there are people that were quite concerned about not, the pool not passing. Now, I think the money was way out of whack, and they really need to phase it back, but is it something that the council could maybe take up, or are we better off getting just a group of interested citizens for us to come up with a plan and possibly think of raising some funds on our own to add to the 1.3 that was donated? And then the other thing is, some people have been talking about a steam train for the train museum up there. Now, I do not buy the thing that it's all of a sudden going to make us rich and happy, but the gentleman at the train museum up there, he did find a stream, it's a privately-owned steam train. We can get it and get it installed and, excuse me, running for about $150,000. Now, we did talk to a few people. I just don't think it's something the council, I don't think we should be using public funds. But I do think we could maybe raise it privately, you know, for the friends of the museum, and if it would be something the council would consider pushing out there to help us raise some money. So there are just a couple of things I wish, you know, that maybe you will think about. There are things that the community would like, or various people in the community. But, you know, we want to do it as economically as possible and not out of city funds because they are, you know, for only certain people. So I think it is up to us to raise our money ourselves. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Any council reports, Mr. Adams?
None.
No.
Councilwoman Bridges?
None yet.
Councilman Haray, any council report?
Well, the only thing I can report is I'm still alive.
I'll just say that, again, I appreciate the public's input at these meetings very much. I think that we all here on council evaluate that. We take it to heart. I would like to say too, that something we will be hearing in two weeks at our next meeting is a proposal that I will have to, in addition to the council meetings twice a month, we will start work sessions or discussion groups. Haven't decided on a name for it yet. There will be opportunities for members of council to come, discuss issues that may or may not be on upcoming agendas, but it was mentioned in public comment about the pool. You know, we still have a 40-year-old pool, so I think something's going to need to be done. That might be a topic. I believe there are a number of topics. But we have a council that is relatively new, and I think that would be a good way to bring all the council members together to have an opportunity to discuss different issues. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. So everybody still breathing, came out alive?
I barely, barely.